Okay, I will go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Uh, we'll raise hand for the pledge.
Yeah.
You're not supposed to touch like, well, agent just pointed.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay amendments to the agenda. The only amendment, I would like to move citizen comments down to um. Five eight, we'll let the development foundation, we'll let Janice uh speak first and then we'll go into citizen comments. Go ahead, motion to allow that.
I make the motion for allowance.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to take a look at the minutes?
Yes.
I make the motion for for mayor.
Second.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, up next is um Janice Hernandez uh for the um South County Economic Development Foundation for the report, Janice.
I'm sorry, my computer here, she had a, she's talking, she couldn't. So I'm here as a foundation, she did give me some full up ones of some things that she's been doing, but I passed out everybody. Um, so if you have any questions about anything on here, I mean, she's, she's working hard. I mean, Jeff knows, he comes to the meetings and um he's on the building sites, he's gonna work in them. Make some things happen, um, we really like the city support, we need the city support. Um, we would like, you know, some more input, you know, maybe come to some of our meetings, up into the office. We don't know what you need, till you come and tell us what you need. Um, she's open, we're open, the board's open to to do whatever we gotta do, the city's a big part of who we are, our business is here, the city's very important to me personally, um, but whatever we can, we just need to know what that is.
Well, I do have some questions, do you have a copy of the contract?
Oh, the contract, I'm sorry, I didn't bring that.
I have one.
But I, I mean, pretty much all.
Well, you know. Does anybody have, do you guys have any questions?
Well, in a way, uh, is there any progress that they have tried to get a hotel into the city of Knox?
Not really, not really, the dentist, well, there's been a lot of effort, the dentist who has the, has the property, who was going to donate as part of his um investment to the project, there's been a little bit of issue with that going on. I haven't personally been that about it, maybe Jesse can answer that a little bit, being on the building sites, have you guys had any thought about that, okay, I know there's some issues with that land now, I don't know if he's definitely willing to give it, but I don't know a hundred percent. But if, I I encourage you to make an appointment with Mikey, go into the office, she could tell you more about her, Tara, what's going on with that. I know that a couple of different people came in, you know, interested in investing from the academy, and I know there were some issues with the dentist and the year laws that you loaned the property, so.
I can, I can answer a little bit, well, I can answer that, Jess, the dentist was possibly, he wasn't giving us the land, giving you guys or anybody land, he was willing to take what the land value was and put that in as his investment, so if the land was worth two hundred thousand, he would have two hundred thousand dollars in shares into it. So that's what he's doing. The thing is with the hotel, to answer Bill's question on that, is basically that was one of the first things I requested from Mikey is to get everybody back together. She's not did that, and it's been over, what, a year, how long has she been employed with us, a year? I don't think she's made the first attempt, so just to clarify the record, it's still open. It's still open for development, Bill, I I mean, Dr. Weaver does want, uh, that's why he is work, working with uh, a couple of people that are into development, and he had it surveyed off and everything, so uh, he's open to anything right now. Um, hotel, whatever it is, so um.
Can we maybe get this group together to come and meet, some of us at the foundation about it? Building and science community, I mean, to bring in what Danny knows who he's been very involved in knowing what's going on with it, to see, you know, how we can bring, we need to work together. Yes, you know.
Well, she's got, Janice, she's got, on this hotel, she's got to initiate that.
Yes.
She's got, she, she, the file was in the drawer, Lisa offered to help her find everything with no, no call back. She's the one that, that's the first thing that the city in Knox requested, and she's not touched it, and it's been a year, so I, I mean.
A lot of investment there.
Yeah, one of the hotel chains was Wyndham, by the way, uh, you know, real progressive hotel chain in their own right as well.
I'm gonna see that happen. I'm gonna see that happen, I'm. Let's work together, try to make it happen, let's try to figure out how to make it happen. We need it.
I don't know.
Yeah.
Else this decision already.
Absolutely. So, let's, you know, let's meet, let's talk about it, you know, how we can move forward, it's big, it's a big project, I mean, our building is.
That's, that's a part of a progressive small city is having a hotel like that. Uh, it would accommodate so many special activities that we have in the community and regionally as well.
Absolutely. We got some of the learning sites, maybe just focus on one, you know, trying to get some businesses into our land and the industrial park, I know it's a big thing right now. Uh.
Have someone stay around here for meetings or anything, so, I think it's very important.
I think it's very important.
Disappointing something I've been done, so.
Yes.
So, I mean, I guess, um, you know, and just going through our contract now, I I don't, I don't, I don't think you guys are fulfilling our contract. Uh. Business, um, district revitalization, which we're handling that, but development consulting, business attraction, has she reached out to any other, any, because I know Goodwill contacted me. Has, is she doing any of that, because that's one big part.
I can't say.
Or the city.
Um, well, in our city limits of our, in the industrial park, the land that we own, there is a couple of people that are interested in this land over there. I can't say when it comes, but there, but there is a bit of a lot of.
Yeah.
Yes.
And then communication with the manufacturers, you know.
She also is in some manufacturers now, she has.
Yeah.
Well, there has been some people interested in some property that we own, yeah.
And then with the, uh, on the contract, housing development, planning and marketing, um, you know, I mean, we've got our own subdivision going. But there's so much more in housing that need, that different type of housing that needs to be done, and what, while we got that in there, you know, we were hoping the development foundation could search the different avenues to get the funding.
That's working on that right now, and there's some good things working out right now, so we do have a committee that's just working on developing developments.
Okay.
That is definitely happening, since I knew that.
So a lot of these things that we want. We should get a report every quarter or something on what she is or you guys are addressing and how, you got a lot of marketing in here, who you mark, trying to market with, you know, just like the industrial park. You know, I I mean, just like today, I talked to one of our manufacturers, you know, basically they had a layoff. They lost a contract, they've not heard from Mikey, hate to say it. That's where she has to, just like with Lisa, she's got to set, go, Lisa always went to the manufacturers to see what was going on, see how they were doing.
She does do that, she has clearly, because I set them up, I set them up, so I can tell you she has, I can tell you she has. Has visited.
Shaky. Anyways, that's all I have.
You know, but as far as the progress report, I think I a hundred percent agree with you, that's something that we should definitely do, love to see you back at our meetings, so that you can hear what's going on.
Well, I I I read the minutes every, every meeting, I try to zoom, I try to zoom.
You need your input, you're a big part of the community.
But I, but I do try to zoom, your speakers, I I think, just like with ours, they need a rest, because it's just, it's it's too hard. And I'm not, you know, I don't know if I'm the only one that zooms that has a hard time, but um.
Love to see that, because your inputs and your votes are very important to us.
Well, maybe. Maybe, we'll see, anybody else have any questions? Okay.
You're in all of our meetings, you're a great team player for us.
Thank you. Thank you.
But just tell us what you need, yeah, we're here to.
It's there.
Yeah.
What we're paying for.
Make appointment, let's go, let's meet at the foundation and talk about it.
We, I say, we need that hotel, man.
I agree.
I thought we need, yeah.
I've been waiting a while.
We do, it's a big investment, yeah, people know them.
That's what we need, that bad.
And come up with investors, that's the thing, I have people working, that's the kind of money. It's hard, so, but I appreciate your time, you know, you can help, we need to work together, Danny, I want to see some of you.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Same.
Okay, moving along, um. Now we'll open it up for citizen comments. Hey.
Okay. So, I guess, take one pass. My concern is about code enforcement, um, as you know, that I'm, I'm under the town, everything. So, obviously, it's in my interest and the interest of other property owners to mainly our properties. And I've been living here for, since February, March, and the residence next to me has looked like that, and I understand that people can't always get to things, and you know, there's illnesses and sicknesses, and you know, there's sometime time management, I'm a fair assumption, but we're, you know, in settlement for now. And I did make a email to the code enforcement department, and then I had to do a follow-up and then got a phone call. And it was met with a lot of, well, unfortunately this, and unfortunately that, and unfortunately this. And I'm not saying that we're not making big steps in improvement, um, and I'm not saying anywhere in town, but I live in Parkview. So I'm not saying that we're not making improvements there, because I think that we are, but I think there needs to be some call to basics. And I think that housekeeping is one of those items that's very easily to be maintained. And, you know, I get met with unfortunaties and manpower restrictions and things of that nature. Um, I've had a, I've got a classic vehicle that I was keeping on the property, I've had this car since I was teenager. I've had it in multiple storage areas or indoors, outdoors. Got a, got a mouse nest in it this year, after only living here for six months, so I've relocated that vehicle, it's not here anymore. Also, you know, with the upcoming winter, concerned about, you know, rodents coming into the house, my house, other houses. I don't think it's much to ask for, just get back to basics, we need to maintain the outside of our homes and the trash and whatnot, and um, I'm not sure, I'm not laying the blame on anyone particular, I think that, you know, whoever's in charge of doing what they're doing is most likely doing what they're supposed to be doing, but I think that there are some basics that could be handled still, and I guess it was just a call to awareness for you guys to know that, you know, what I'm, what I'm seeing, what I'm addressing, you know, what I'm encountering, and just to kind of like make it known. So, that's kind of what I had, unless anybody's got anything to.
Okay, the uh, the house you're showing, two twenty?
Yeah.
Is that a vacant house?
Uh, it was a, it was a duplex that was converted a few years back, or several years back to a single dwelling. Um, on the GIS, I think it's listed as two eighteen, but I think the mail's going to two twenty, so it's kind of a weird item, I think maybe half of it's either not being used, because there's an electric meter that's not installed. Um, so I don't know if it's been fully rehabbed back to a single dwelling, or if they're only living in half, I I don't know the specifics, I never see the neighbor coming and going. Um, so I'm not sure.
For, but for your information, I I mean, you need to attend the border works meeting, although they're during the day.
Yeah, that's probably a little harder, but I mean, I'll be able to tell, what, what time is that?
That, that's uh, nine thirty in the morning, the fourth Wednesday of every month.
Fourth Wednesday of every.
Of every month, that's where we do hear cases on code enforcement.
Okay.
That will give you a pretty good idea on how many cases we go through continuously, so I mean.
Saying that there's not a caseload, but.
There's a case.
There's a call to basics, you know.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and they might be on the code enforcement, I I don't know right now, I don't have the list, but, you know, there's a legal process when you do code enforcement that you gotta go through.
Yeah.
And, and we do that.
Yeah.
Um, but the, the caseload is enormous every month that we go through, and uh, you know, eventually that will get cleaned up.
Yeah.
Don't know where it stands, I'll have to check tomorrow, but.
Yeah, I got an email, I brought it with me, I just.
Yeah.
Passed it out, you know, where I had communicated back in.
No, I'll bring, I'll bring this to his attention tomorrow, see if he's uh, got it on the list.
Mid-August, yeah, back in five days, so.
Yeah, I'll check with him.
Really no change, and I'm not saying anybody needs to do something specifically for me, I, you know, it's not that at all, but um, you know, I don't think that in maybe in your neighborhood, or, you know, in another neighborhood, none of the neighbors would be too, too bonded, I don't know, I mean, I know that Parkview's under a lot of reconstruction and you know, when we moved here, I didn't know that I needed to watch out for a, you know, a more downside, I guess, of a four thousand person community, you know what I mean, so um, just a, just kind of a information that, let's get back to the basics, I mean, we can clean up our trash and mow our yards and tend our fences, I don't, I don't think that's that seems like home based homeownership.
That's, that's the thing is, there's a lot of them down there that don't.
Yeah.
Believe in getting them all out and stuff, so, and that's what I'm talking about, um, we do do a lot of code enforcement, we do a lot down there, it it's a process.
Right.
And uh, we will, I make sure that I address this with Lonnie to see where it is.
Okay.
Okay?
Four words is the four.
I'll go down for you.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the agenda is uh, public hearing for the twenty twenty-six budget, and I'll go, I'll go ahead and open that public hearing up. Um, does anybody from the audience have any comments on the twenty twenty-six budget? Um. Maximum, maximum levy will be two million one hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred two dollars. Somewhere near, so, no comments from the public, I'll go ahead and um.
I don't know, where do I get a copy of the budget from the city?
Uh, you can get it in the clerk's office.
Okay.
I'll go ahead and and uh, close the public hearing, um. Has the council had a take a look, had a chance to take a look at it? Okay, so I need a motion to go ahead and approve twenty twenty.
Make a motion that we approve the upcoming budget for twenty-six.
Second?
I'll check it out.
On favor?
Aye.
Over.
Okay. Move on uh, to the plan, um, number seven, um. Planning Commission's favorable recommendation for seven hundred foot square foot two-story for two mile jurisdiction. So that's in the two mile, we already did that for the city, so um. You guys need to, to vote on, on accepting the recommendation. Need a motion to accept that recommendation from the planning. The planning needs advisor, so that's why when you have something like this.
Right.
Either you guys recommend a change or not, and the council.
I make the motion to accept and adopt the Plan Commission's favorable recommendation for seven hundred square foot two-story for the two mile jurisdiction.
Jeff, since you're on planning commission, can you explain, you know, why you're doing that?
Well.
That's for the, that's for the bottom floor, correct?
Right, and and we amended it actually to uh, with a minimum of four hundred square feet for the two stories, so.
Yeah.
But uh, well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's acceptable, because people will be able to uh, uh, to build a uh, a dwelling, a house with a little bit less um, less footage, so uh, it should be a win-win for everybody in that capacity.
Yeah, I agree.
Absolutely.
Okay. Motion, give me.
Just motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay, next on the agenda is um, the Planning Commission did give a unfavorable recommendation for chicken and rabbits for the city limits and two mile jurisdiction. Same thing, either you can um. Go with their unfavorable recommendation and leave it alone, or you can uh, rehear it as a council.
Well, on uh, September the second, a public hearing was held to amend ordinance nine five eight with the possibility to allow chickens and rabbits within the city of Knox and the two mile jurisdiction by special use permitting. During the public hearing, comments and testimony were heard by the public, and then questions and answers were uh, conducted by the commission. No public member was in attendance wanting to allow chickens. So, in consideration of the earlier informational chicken surveys by the city of Knox and the inclusive Plan Commission findings, the commission voted in unfavorable recommendation to the city council to not adopt the proposed amendment to ordinance nine five eight. Therefore, I make a motion to deny amending ordinance nine five eight, which aligns with the Plan Commission's unfavorable recommendation.
That is your motion?
Yes, sir.
Need a second?
One second.
On favor?
Aye.
Nay? Okay, three ayes, one nay.
So, the lady that has the forty-four rabbits, and that's not been approved, so is she gonna get fined, or what's gonna happen?
She already has been fined, uh, that went in front of the border works, as I said, there are numerous violations. Um, so we will determine um, what, what happens there, yeah, you know, I, I mean, the border works, we still have a few questions, you know, with the forty-five rabbits.
When I heard she had a few rabbits, I thought, oh, she's got three, four, five, no, forty-four.
Yeah, and that's, you know, uh. She's not the only one that had rabbits, we had another complaint on Roosevelt Road, and and basically um, where the rabbits become a nuisance is when you let them run, and this guy just flat, I, we think, opened his rabbit cages up, let them run, digging holes in the neighbor's yards, digging holes in the football field, you know, on Roosevelt Culver. So, they become a nuisance when, and he had quite, quite a few rabbits, I mean, it wa, it wasn't just two or four either.
And then the other part of my question was, those who have chickens, and that's not been passed, to have chickens in the city limits, do they get a fine, what, what's going on there, are they getting a fine?
Yeah, we, I I mean, I can tell you right now, on this sheet right I gave you guys, that's Lonnie's stats, just this year, I think we've had oh, domestic foul, which is, all of them were chickens, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Eight or nine cases that we had to track down. The rest was house, household pets, so they do, we do, we, you know, we do give them a chance to get rid of them at first, you know, and that's only fair. And and then if they don't, then, then it's a hefty fine, uh, so, yes, they do get fined, and um, but usually when, when you know, we find out they have rabbits and complaints, most of people's been pretty good, they, they've gotten rid of them. Uh, so uh, that will continue, um. Any other questions on that? Okay, uh, next on the agenda is stop sign request on the intersection of Washington and McGill Street, uh, they're requesting that we do have stop signs on Washington both ways, McGill, there is no stop signs, they're requesting stop signs put on McGill. That is the only, um, if you go down Washington Street, every intersect road has stops except that one right there, um, and the superintendent, I talked to him today about it, and he's all in favor of putting one there, because uh, sometimes they do get whipped down there, and that was the complaint from the woman that, you know.
Didn't head start right there, didn't head start right there.
What?
It's by the Catholic Church.
No, no, down McGill, down, down.
Never mind.
Yeah, it's the only one that has, doesn't have that.
It's a nice intersection.
Yeah.
Has there been a trick, am I allowed to speak?
Fine, well, go ahead.
Has there been a traffic study done for the amount of traffic, daily traffic through there, and is it just to be trying to control speed, which is typically against.
We look, we, 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 we look at it, we look at it. We look, we, 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 we look at it, we look at it as, as stop signs do try to control speed somewhat. We also look at it as a safety part. Uh, if there's a lot of people, uh, flying through that or whatever, um, we look at all that. We really, stop signs, you know, to me is more or less more on the safety side than on the, on the speed side because sometimes a stop sign doesn't slow that traffic down.
No, doesn't actually, I think.
But as far as.
And it creates more noise pollution, stop and go and
Yeah.
more irritated drivers and.
Yeah, so as far as, uh, traffic study, no. No, we do not have the mechanism to do traffic studies. Um, we do on the highway because the state does that for us. So, okay.
So you need a motion?
I need a motion to go ahead and approve the, putting the stop signs on McGill Street.
I'll make a motion for us to put stop signs on McGill, Washington, to slow down that traffic.
Yes, I can.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Clerk treasure, no report? No report, mayor's report. Uh, just the, uh, fall bash, you know, we have the Knox alumni, you know, competition and basically the class of, is that ninety-seven? Has won it three out of the four years. So, um, my class won it last year and they took it right back from us. So that's all I have, council items.
I'd like to give credit and praise to, um, one of the local officers from the police department, um, Matt Burgholder.
Yep.
I think he does a great job and I really appreciate him as a city officer, so I just wanted to bring attention to that.
Oh, Matt does a great job and all of them, you know, it is a job. It is, so, uh, any other? Okay, Jeff?
All right, the next meeting is on September the twenty-third. We'll sign the APV booklet and the meeting is adjourned.